All right, it's nine o'clock. I think we'll call this meeting to order. If you'd stand with me for the flag salute. If you'd remain standing, we'll have prayer with Reverend Harold Nelson.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you and we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity you give us in this free country, to be able to have meetings like this and to be able to discuss issues that pertain, Lord, to our community. Lord, I pray that you will be with the commissioners as they guide and lead the areas that they've been voted into, that, Lord, every decision made would help better our country, our town. And, Lord, I just pray that you will just give them guidance, wisdom, every issue that's discussed, that, Lord, that there may be a resolution to everything and that everyone will leave this place with unity still in their hearts and care for this state and our country as well as our own city. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We will, I got something here that I need to do first, but after I'm done with this, we'll have a quick executive session this morning for the board before we get started, so bear with us if you would. On May 1st, 2024, the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police, KACP, and the Valor Foundation, which supports Kansas law enforcement across the state of Kansas, held their annual banquet and Valor Award presentations. The KACP presented or present awards for four special categories: A bronze award, an award to recognize outstanding achievement above and beyond the normal law enforcement responsibilities and duties; the silver award, which is an award for extraordinary action which directly contributed to the significant prolonging of actual saving lives; the gold award, an award recognized uncommon valor in the line of duty; the chief's award, an award recognizing the supreme sacrifice of an officer who had died in the line of duty. From across the state of Kansas, there were 54 awards handed out that night. The following three awards were given for events which involved two Reno County deputies and one state trooper. Jeffrey Schwi, I think it is, a Kansas Highway Patrolman, Levi Conrad, and Derek Berg from the Reno County Sheriff's Office. On March 29th, 2023, a be-on-the-lookout was put out for McPherson County for a suicidal female. The BLO advised the subject was driving a silver Hyundai Santa Fe with Illinois plates. McPherson County attempted to ping the subject phone and the locations were in the northwest corner of Reno County. Trooper Schwi started to the area to see if he could locate her as multiple other units were looking in the northern parts of Stafford and Reno Counties. Trooper Schwi began to look within Corvada Wildlife Refuge, which is just inside the northeast corner of Stafford County. As Trooper Schwi, I think it is, entered into the refuge from the east, he saw a silver Hyundai Santa Fe with matching Illinois tag parked on the side of the road. A trooper approached the vehicle and found it to be locked, running, and a female was lying in the backseat. Very short time later, deputies Conrad and Berg arrived on the scene. One of them could see bleach bottles on the rear floorboard. The trooper could see that she was breathing and moving while laying in the back third row seat, but she was not responsive to the officers on scene. Due to the possibility that she created toxic gas and attempts to kill herself, a trooper broke the front passenger window, side window, that was facing the north as there was a strong south wind. As soon as the trooper broke the window, he could smell strong chemical odor coming out of the vehicle and he could hear her coughing and hacking in the backseat. Trooper Schwi then went around the driver's side and broke the side window out of the front window, or front. After a short period of time, deputies Conrad and Berg and a trooper opened the rear doors of the back hatch to give the female much more fresh air as possible. Deputies spoke to the female, but she refused to come out of the vehicle, stating that she wanted to be left alone. Eventually, she came close enough to the opening of the door that Deputy Conrad, a quick-thinking reaction allowed him to grab hold of her and assisted from Deputy Berg removed her from the vehicle. For extraordinary action which directly contributed to the actual saving of a life, Jeffrey Schwi, Levi Conrad, and Derek Berg each received the silver award. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. We thank you for that. We would like to, if you'd come up for pictures, that'd be fantastic. Sandra, you want us around there with him?
Thank you.
They were proud of our law enforcement. They do a great job and under Sheriff, I appreciate you and the men you have and women that work for you. They do a fantastic job and so thank you so much for that. Well, probably before we go into public comment, we'll retire for about 15 minutes, maybe, you think? That'd be enough? And we'll move for an executive session here. I need a motion. I move the board to recess into executive session with county counselor, administrator. The subject matter to be legal obligations of the county and jurisdiction for executive session is to discuss confidential legal matters which are protected by client attorney privilege. Do I have a motion to move to exec session?
And probably the time to come down would be 9:25?
Yeah, okay, 9:25. We're gonna run upstairs to an office. Folks, hold tight if you want to. If you got public comment, it won't be very long. It kind of pertains to things we need to talk about, so. Oh, call for a voice vote. All in favor, say yea. Hey, we'll probably do that more today because she's got a bad voice. I'm not gonna make her talk much. Sorry, I blew through that a little too quick. Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to determine any revisions or additions or revisions to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move 6F and 6G out of the consent agenda to be discussed during the business part of the meeting.
Okay, we'll move them to the business items that will be 8C and D.
Do we have second thought or do anything to move it?
I don't think so.
I believe it'd be 7D and 7E.
Yeah, we can just move it down there. And we had an addition as well to the consent agenda, which would be 7D, the disaster proclamation that was made to approve that for the five of us, so. Any other additions or revisions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll so move.
Mr. Whitehall, seconded by Commissioner Bogner. Any further comments? If nothing, Sandy's having a little trouble this morning. I will just go. All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Yea, all in oppose, say nay. Okay, that passed five to zero. All right, let's move down to, that's kind of split between pages, and the business item, seven. Reno County Health Department Annual Report, Carla.
Good morning. So you were provided with a copy of our annual report. And so this summarizes all of the activities in the Health Department for 2023. We, most of this information should have been redundant. We... most of this information should have been redundant. That was provided in all of my monthly reports. Also summarized a lot of the areas in the Health Department, provided you with some statistics and some highlights from each area. So any questions on the report?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty quick. Nobody's got any questions? God, we're gonna make it easy on you, Dave.
Wonderful.
All right, those are good days, aren't they? Thanks, Carla.
Just as long as she was prepared for fifteen minutes of questioning, that's all I care about.
Yes, that's it, if you're done.
Thank you.
Was you out in Ulysses? I know this is off-record in the meeting, but...
Yes, sir.
Did you know a Christie phrasey?
Yes, very well.
I was friends with her and her husband, so I was gonna ask it for... Sorry, we're sidebaring it just a little bit, so... Cool, thank you.
Yes.
Well, thank you for your work. We appreciate it. Let's move to seven B, replacement appointment of Reno County Health Department Advisory Board. Randy, you wanna comment on this?
Sure. So on the Health Advisory Board that was appointed end of last year for 2024, there was Aubrey... I'm looking at... no, thank you, from the hospital that was on the board, has moved positions or, I think, left the hospital. So there's a vacant spot that's kind of, in a way, earmarked for the hospital or medical personnel. And so the... there were two applicants. We had this open for a while, and there were two applicants. The advisory board is recommending Kelly... Kelly Miller, that's Care Management Director at the hospital, to fill that position. And I believe, is it a three-year position or two-year term?
That term... so she will fulfill Aubrey's term, and Aubrey's term was down there, which began... So this new term would be June first of 2024 through December thirty-first of 2025.
Okay.
And in the packet, both applications were in there.
Right.
There are two. So Kelly Miller and Jamie Lynn Archer.
Okay. All right, thank you. Comments or questions?
As per... I think we should interview both applicants before we make a decision. But that has not been a popular position for the board in the past, so...
Okay. Do we have a motion? We can either approve the replacement of the appointment or deny the replacement of the appointment and send it back to Health Department. Daniel? Move to approve?
Yes.
Okay, go with a second, seconded by Commissioners Ersh... I mean, yeah, Commissioners Ersh. Any further comments? Well, if not, let's take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye, and that's just for the fact of not interviewing both applicants.
Okay, motion passed four to one. Seven C, discussion of Sheriff's Shooting Range Phase Two, Fire District Three, and Fire District Seven building needs. I freaked the sheriff out yesterday. I called him and I said, "Your shooting range is blowing away." And he thought maybe the top was coming off the shooting area, and I drove by and the dirt was blowing off the hill. I said, "One grain at a time, it's disappearing. We gotta get some grass growing." Sorry for that. My poor sense of humor.
This happened to be an unusual week for that to happen.
Yeah, it was. Too soon, wasn't it?
Yeah, definitely, definitely. So Detective Vance, I put together this PowerPoint. Some of the stuff that you gentlemen have already seen, and some of it's new, just kind of some updates on where we're going and what we're heading, what we're looking at. Do I have control of this?
Actually, I do, and let me, Harold. Perfect.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is the project to date, the Phase One, which was approved a while back. It consisted of, you know, locating the land, which was in cooperation with the landfill. Detective Vance, I went to the planning and zoning and got it zoned properly. We've been coordinating with SCS engineers, who's contracted with the landfill originally, so we just kind of piggybacked off that, and they've been helping us a lot. So to date, they've done approximately thirty-four thousand, seven dollars worth of work. Some of the soil inspections, and we also piggybacked on, to try to keep costs down, in order to put the roads in, we needed to crush rock. And the landfill was already gonna have some done, so we just piggybacked off their contract and had a bunch made for future use. As we go into the culver and the driveway, those are already in place. We've conducted the design-build companies, and we decided to go with Hutton. Hutton's the ones that actually have been working on it and putting it all together, and general managers of the projects. The landfill is also building all the berms. They've done all the dirt work out there. SCS, the engineers have gone out and they flew a drone over, and the water runoff and the ditch that the landfill needs, along with all the berms that makes it complete. The landfill's been doing that on their off-time. It's a secondary project when they have time to be able to go and do it, utilizing county resources. So they've been doing that, which kind of helps save us some money in that. Hydro seeding, which you mentioned, just got completed last week, which the rain that we're getting, we actually really need. The Phase One is... and here's the first picture of the awning. This is the twenty-five yard line. That'll have this awning up there. We'll be able to do reloads and some classes underneath that awning, as well as there's gonna be a lighting project underneath there to give different scenarios and different situations for all sorts of training that we can do underneath that. So the Phase One, which consists of this, is due to be complete in just a few weeks. As we go through some of these photos here, you can see the concrete work that's getting done. They've done an amazing job. It looks really great out there. What we did, instead of putting up... typically what we do is we store our targets, our backers, and other products that we need to work on the range and do stuff. The landfill had replaced this building when they did their remodel. It's a good building, so we went ahead and tried, decided to reutilize it. The white on it is, we're gonna get it painted. That's the primer to keep the rust down. We're gonna go ahead and use it. We poured a pad and have placed it on there, and it should work just great for what we need out there. So as we go into Phase Two, if you look at the map, it's circled in yellow what the Phase Two actually consists of. We pulled the sidewalks off Phase One because we didn't want to pour the sidewalks, and then it's not really conducive for what we have for the building. So we want to make sure the building goes in and we can pour the sidewalks for the needs. That meets the needs of the project. So it kind of shows that entire map layout over there with the sidewalks, the building, and the utilities. The second shows some of the elevation, and these are just mockups of what the building could look like as we go down. Some of this training that we utilized when we decided to build the training facility, it in itself is being built to utilize as training. If you notice the ladder on the back and the platform up there is for elevated shooting and other stuff that we can simulate for rooftop entries or that type of stuff, that the SWAT team or other deputies need to utilize to make entries into the facilities. Of course, there's a map of the facility. There's a mockup what the inside could look like. We've been in discussion with the city on bringing fresh water into that site. What we have attached here is basically a letter that was given to me a while back, wanting our engineers, when we start this project, we'll probably have the engineers, if approved, look into it and make sure that that's feasible to run water that way, and if we have to put a lift station in somewhere or a pressure tank or a pump, which could be done. This just goes down a list of some of the features, the building and the facility features that we plan on doing within it. I could read that to you. I'm sure you guys have read the packet. As we go through, there's a long list of the training facility capabilities. Deputies sat down when they designed this, and Deputy Vance, I kind of headed this up. As you go down, look at the capability, there's just, it's unlimited. Everything that we do, we could utilize this facility for. In the SWAT trainings that we do and the coordination and partnerships that we've created across the state, these are some of the agencies that will be able to come over and utilize the facility if we get it built. These are just letters of support that these agencies have given us within Reno County, that they would like to see the building done, as well as Pratt and Harvey. We reached out to some other jurisdictions that have built their facilities, and this is just kind of a cost, a cost difference based on some of their... some of what they've spent and the year that they've built it, based on the economy and what today's money would be. That's kind of exceeding it. We're definitely not looking to do any of that. And actually, some of those, a couple of them, let me see. None of the above-listed ranges have the capabilities of the facility we're currently working towards. Saline and Garden City are indoor ranges and limited to twenty-five yards. Shawnee's an outdoor, and it's only limited at a hundred yards. And we're actually looking at a range of providing up to four hundred yards. I had... it's been about nine months, but I met with, had lunch with the director at Kelly TC, and advised him what we was looking at building, and he commented on actually coming out and using our facility for some sniper schools instead of going down to Cheney Lake where they typically go, because it'd be closer and more convenient. In the year 2023, we actually have eighty-three deputy positions, and throughout the training that they're required to get, certified deputies actually require to have forty hours every year. So for the year 2023, our deputies actually completed four thousand, one hundred seventy and a half hours of training. So that's just kind of some clarity on the training that we do, how much training we do, and the necessity of it. Pending any questions?
Questions for Sheriff? How are you currently providing your training?
So typically, we go out of town for some, but when we do training in town, it's kind of limited based on the training facility that we have at the correctional facility.
Availability.
Yeah. Availability and the size.
So just honestly, are you behind on that when you don't have your own?
No, we found a way.
You got, you get it squished in, but...
Yeah, when we're doing firearms, we're actually partnering with the Department of Corrections. HCF has been phenomenal in letting us... of course, they have their own training program that they have to do, so we kind of have to work around their schedule, but we get us, we get us squads in.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
I might have one comment regarding, and I've talked with the sheriff about this as well as administrator. And the plan they put together, Hutton put together, was really outstanding. As we look forward to other needs that we have within the county when it comes time for emergency management, court systems, that we will probably have to figure out a way to add a court system. I... especially when it comes to emergency management, I know someone has toured Sedgwick County's emergency management building. I think we, to foster good use of taxpayers' funds, I think we need to seriously look at how we could use this, if this size of the building is the only option we have, of how can we use this in other ways? Now, I know that you're gonna be using it for training and all this, but in case of an emergency, I just think we want to be really careful about the size and the use and the future location, as well as the future building needs. And I know Randy, Commissioner Parks, and I have been visiting with regard to other opportunities and things that are gonna come up in the future, and so we have to look and combine everything to make the best use of funds we have, and I have visited with you about that. And so I think, in my mind, sometimes nothing against Chevys, but sometimes a Chevy works just as well as a Rolls Royce. And so I think that's just something that we as commissioners have to look at with you in that process of providing the things the Sheriff Department needs, as well as Police Department and other agencies. I just think that's something we have to be serious about looking at, so that's all the comment I had.
If I may, sir. No, when this project first started and we was looking at funding it with an outside source, we actually put together a project that was once. When we found out that we wasn't gonna get that money, we scaled it down dramatically to basically what we needed. And that's kind of what we're looking at now. We scaled it down. We've even removed some stuff in the past few months to try to get the cost down and just trying to get, not necessarily bare bones, because I don't want to, I don't want to just put a Band-Aid on something and then, you know, in four years, I'm back asking for more to make it what we need again. I would like to build a facility that's gonna be there for a while, especially when you talk about emergency management, because I, we learned, I learned, well, when you have a command post and there's a tornado coming through, you need it to withstand that tornado, right? The last thing you want is to have a command post controlling emergency management be destroyed.
Yeah.
So then you're talking a lot more money. Just throwing it out there.
Any other comments? Okay, thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, no, we did meet as a building committee and discuss some things with Randy and with Harlan. Commissioner Hurst and I did. I'd like Randy to recap some of that and some options that we have going forward with this.
Well, for this item, this is the Sheriff's Shooting Range, then some Fire District building needs. So the committee was looking at various building... Well, the EMS building on Fifth Avenue that the county has bought with ARPA money, needing to renovate that. The Arlington EMS station, that probably about half or a third of that will be ARPA funds. The rest, the county will have to pay for to be able to do that. And then we had the Shooting Range and Fire District Three and Seven needing new buildings, along with long-range planning, as Commissioner Hurst mentioned, maybe related to the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Management and the Health Department. There are still needs that we're talking about. We just aren't ready to, you know, finance those at this point. So what was brought up was, originally, the Shooting Range was going to be paid with reserve money. But as the cost is still over a million dollars, and the fire departments needing new buildings, and their individual reserves are not enough to pay for the building, maybe half of the amount, and Adam's here to explain the Fire District needs in a minute. So what the committee talked about is if we bond the Shooting Range and the two Fire District buildings with the Public Building Commission, bond that over five years at about three and a half percent, is kind of what municipal bonds are going right now with our rating, our credit rating. Interest that the county's making on those reserve funds we have in banks is about five percent. So we're better off borrowing the money and letting the reserves kind of build some interest that help the general fund and property taxes when we do the budget. The EMS buildings, because combined, those amounts are gonna be less than what the Shooting Range is, to use reserve money for taking care of EMS building needs that are above what the ARPA funds will cover. So that's kind of the, I guess, the strategy we're looking at. And today, what we're asking is, is the majority of the commission wanting to move forward with Shooting Range Phase Two? And if so, at what amount? And then I will work on the financing. And then also for Fire District Three and Fire District Seven, do we have the, I guess, authority to move forward with financing of those options so that Adam and Travis can get the final work needed to put those, get those buildings out to bid and hopefully built this year or early next year? But Adam is here again to speak about the Fire Districts.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weiser, Emergency Management Director. So we'll talk about Fire District Three and Seven, kind of separately, but keep in mind they're gonna be, or we want them to be twin stations. We want them to be similar. So District Three, it serves Nickerson and the Highlands. So district three, it serves Nickerson and the Highlands. Uh, we actually started a building process with them back in 2019. So in 2019, the chief at the time, Chief Bobby White, came to the commission, talked about the building needs and asked for permission to have some sort of space study done by Landmark Architects. Landmark Architects did a space study, came back stating they needed a new station. And, um, at the time, the building cost that was presented was over a million dollars. We didn't think that was feasible for a county fire station to cost over a million dollars. Um, so we started looking at other options. So district three, uh, when you look at that Nickerson station, it's a fire station, but it was an old service station. So it was never intended to be a fire station. So the county purchased it in 1982 and it's been in service since then. So since 82, the size of a fire apparatus has grown significantly. There's bigger fire trucks in there than what were ever designed to be, and they're out of space. So they have a tender or a water truck, one of the large water trucks that haul water to all our fires. They have it in their station and it has to be full of water to be able to pull into the station. Otherwise it's too tall. If there's a leak in the tank or anything like that and the water comes out, that, that thing's not coming out. Uh, between that, uh, their, their fire engine and their pumper truck, there's inches between the front and rear walls where you can't even walk between them because the apparatus is so big. The, the building is in disrepair. You can see daylight through some of the walls. And the, it also rains on the inside more in the apparatus bay than the rest of the building. When we looked at the cost to improve the current structure, to either raise it up to accommodate larger trucks or add on to it, the cost of that was going to be equivalent or more than building a new fire station. So they currently own the whole block that the fire station sits on, so they have the property in place. So next we'll get into fire district seven. Several months ago, we came to the Board of County Commissioners and asked to purchase some property for fire district seven. Fire district seven, their station is simply too small for them and that station is also in disrepair. So the, the cinder blocks, you can see through the cinder blocks, when it rains outside, it's pouring inside. So you have, uh, you walk into their station, they have plastic covers on everything inside their station because of how much moisture gets inside of their, especially on their electronics and stuff. The trucks are so large in that station that they had to fit, fit them in there like jigsaw puzzles, often climbing through the passenger seat of a vehicle to get in the driver's seat to be able to drive. And then they had to strategically place them inside their station, thinking which truck is going to respond first, potentially delaying response times. So they, they purchased the land, thinking, hoping that, uh, the commission would support a new fire station coming. Our, we told them that our goal is to have them a solid answer and hopefully get something started in 2024. So we, we sent out some estimates to several different contractors in the Reno County area, asking for rough estimates on what, what we could build for twin fire stations in the county. What we'd be looking at is a two 60 by 100 buildings, identical to each other with six bay total, six bays on each of them. So the six bays, two of those would be drive-through bays, uh, the rest of them would be back indoors. Inside there, they, they'd have the tube heaters, classroom, a restroom and a small office for the chiefs. So 60 by 100, 16 foot insides, uh, steel frame, 29 gauge steel. So, uh, total cost of those would be approximately $400,000 each, but we'd still have to go to bid on that. District three would be comfortable with the reserves funds, putting, putting down the first $200,000. So we need $200,000 in funding for, uh, district three. And then district seven would be comfortable putting out about $150,000, leaving about 250 to, to bond for, uh, district seven. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Do these kind of mirror the buildings that are up in the Highlands?
They're, they're very close to it.
Very close in design like that?
Yes, sir.
Do we have steps in place to keep these buildings from being in disrepair in the future? Cause I know that seems to be a, um, theme, like what, what steps are like for the other stations are being done to keep them from being in disrepair?
So there's constant maintenance that goes into these buildings. However, when we have purchased older buildings in the past, there just simply hasn't been funding available to maintain them at adequate level. Uh, we're hoping with the changes in the fire districts moving forward, these stations will be serviceable well past my lifetime and for years to come.
And then, um, with, uh, the potential consolidation of the fire districts, does that change any of these plans in the future? Or like, I mean, is this something we should wait until after we decide if we're going to consolidate to see if we're going to, like, I mean, cause I don't know if like things will want to be moved or?
So we've discussed this in length and this is, that was part of the reason why we have waited so long to come back to the commission and formally ask for any sort of bonding. And those stations would not move. So our volunteer base bases are in those cities. So Turon has a pretty good volunteer base, Nickerson has a vol, a good volunteer base. And those are the primary stations. The primary stations need to reside in those cities or remain even with consolidation.
Okay. And then, um, as far as like the bonding and the, the debt, I'm, I'm not a big fan of debt. Um, I mean, even though if we got the money in reserves to pay for it, I, I, and I mean, the, the borrower is slave to the lender. And so what would it take to raise the funds to just be able to pay for them versus bonding? I mean, like would it be a tax increase in the fire district or, I mean, like what, what, what would be, we'd be looking at if we just wanted to pay cash for them? Because if we're talking about a five-year bond, we're, we're talking about minding the next, what, three commissions to the decisions we make here today?
I think it'd be a significant tax increase to each fire district. And it would be years down the line before we could even talk about building them again.
Okay. So where does the money come from then? If we're bonding it, if we can pay for it in five years, like what's the difference, I guess?
Um, each district would then have, I mean, instead of saving up for five years as they're falling apart and then building, not knowing if the cost will go up, we're buying with the cost right now of construction or the building and putting in with probably about three and a half percent interest, you know, a five-year payment from the districts. So they will have, still have some tax increase in each of those districts to help cover that finance cost. But if you just save up to build in the future, it probably will, I mean, it, it's hard to know what the cost in five years or six years is going to be for these buildings.
Any other comments?
I know I've.
Mr. Friesen?
Um, I, I just, uh, the, the one thing that I'm still concerned about, but I think, um, I don't know, I just doesn't seem like there's any traction for, um, consolidation in the western part of the county. I, I completely understand the point of there are volunteers in, in, in certain communities that, that need to be close. I'm not sure that's the case in every district. I'm a little disappointed that we've continued to not talk about the synergies of EMS and fire in the western half of the county. I know we just approved a, a new EMS building that's, um, not coordinating with, with, um, fire. And, you know, we talked just briefly about this opportunity to maybe, you know, have a 24/7 fire and EMS operation in the eastern or the western half of the county. But that would require some consolidation and so forth. So I, I'm, um, very sensitive and aware of the need to support EMS or sorry, fire, uh, volunteers and, and have their, their service buildings close. At the same time, uh, I think we're continuing a model that perhaps was sustainable, you know, half a century ago, which is not very sustainable today. I mean, we're going to be right back where we were. We're going to go into debt. We're going to build all these new buildings that have new maintenance. And, you know, I don't understand how often they're used today, especially in some of the smaller districts. And, you know, having a place to locally store, um, you know, wildfire, um, apparatus versus, um, you know, apparatus needed for structure fires. I mean, having a structured fire system that's consolidated still makes a lot of sense to me. I know, uh, like the Bueller Fire District, they work hard to have volunteers, but, uh, and it seems like they have really good response for, um, you know, wildfire issues, but the, the other responses I think are, are a little harder to get, um, full response to. So, um, I just, I think we've thrown up our hands and said it's too hard to figure this out. And so we're just going to continue to do it the way we've been doing it. There's so many opinions on it. I, I think it's going to be really hard and I'm not blaming Adam for that. I think it's, it's our job to make those hard decisions. But I'm a little surprised we've just abandoned the, the hard conversations of consolidation. And just are, are back to what we've been doing for decades. So.
Commissioner Friesen, if I may, I, I don't think we've abandoned the consolidation talk by any means. Our plan is to have some sort of documentation back to you guys in front of the board later this year. Hopefully before, uh, maybe October, November timeframe where we talk about consolidation. It's still my belief that consolidation is best for the county. But I do believe that the stations in the, the small, the, the small towns will stay. What consolidation would do for the county would, we could tailor a response for every sort of emergency. So currently for a structured fire, you get the city or jurisdiction have an authority and then you get the two surrounding tenders from the, the other two jurisdictions. With consolidation, we could combine that response and we could be getting resources from every jurisdiction coming in.
I, I guess just my last point then is just, I would personally to vote, to prove some of this would need to understand, you know, that consolidation or not, this is the best decision. If we, if we invest in these areas, then have a consolidation conversation. It's like, well, we don't need one of these stations. I think that would be the worst of all the decisions here is to invest in an area that would eventually be consolidated. So. Thank you.
Mr. Friesen, I've thought about this consolidation just because of what you mentioned before, uh, today. How many pieces of equipment are in the Turon in district seven?
Oh, probably roughly 12. Probably roughly 12 pieces of equipment.
I didn't realize it was that many.
So di- district three and district seven actually have the same amount of equipment. And district three actually has two stations.
Yeah. I, I was just, and that was what I was getting at was the need for, uh, that size of building out of Turon once they haven't had that kind of building. And so maybe they, they store things in different areas, but.
In the past, they've actually used some of their firefighters, uh, outbuildings and storage buildings to store some of their equipment as well because their fire station has not been big enough.
And I do think that when we look at fire stations and EMS, we need to look at them occupying the same buildings, uh, when at all possible. And I know that's not possible at what we're looking at, at Arlington now, but. Yeah. I, I, I've turned both of the, of the properties that we're talking about with three and seven and, and, uh, they both need facilities. And it's roughly 16 to 20 miles from Arlington to Turon in that category. And so time-wise, it makes a, it makes sense to be able to have facilities at Turon. And I think Turon and Sylvia, what, 12 miles or so apart, something like that. And so, you know, there's that, we're a big county, uh, with lots of area to cover.
When we talk about station locations, Nickerson and Turon will have to stay. Um, there's, there's a few stations in the center of our county that we'll have to have some tough discussions on if there's consolidation in the future, what the future of those might look like, because they're not, they're not on the outside of the county. And there's other fire districts that have stations close and some of those are in disrepair too.
Mr. Weiser?
Yeah. Um, and so I, I actually spent a good time, a good amount of time talking to, um, the people from fire district seven, um, back when, uh, we approved the land purchase. Um, so, and, and with consolidation, I, I figured this would kind of happen. But when I talked to them, uh, when we were talking about the land purchase, the, uh, the firefighter just I talked to was like, yeah, hey, a lot of us, you know, do this sort of work. And so we were planning on, you know, getting the cost down by doing a lot of the stuff ourselves, you know? Get us the shell and, you know, we'll do the drywall, we'll do this, we'll do that, you know? And we'll just, uh, that way we're, you know, doing it to help, help our community. Um, and they, they really had a servant's heart, at least, uh, that was my impression of, you know, hey, we're doing this for the community. Um, which was why I voted to, um, to, uh, to buy the land. So is that gone? Is that why we're doing the, uh, same cost here for both of them? Or we just don't know if that's, I mean, is that just in case we can't count on it or like, I mean, would?
I, I think they'll still do a little bit of the dirt work and that sort of thing around the station. Um, cause the numbers don't include any sort of dirt work. But finished work inside the station, we would prefer a licensed professional to complete that work. If that's absolutely off the table and we can say, hey, we can provide you a shell, nothing else. I think the work will get done eventually, but it won't be nearly as quick and it won't be by licensed professionals. I think if we're looking at consolidation in the future, we should, we should attempt to have a licensed professional outfit all of our buildings.
Okay. That makes sense. And we don't have EMS out in Turon, do we anymore?
No, sir. Reno County EMS covers that area.
You had, we've heard at great length in the past about the, uh, the consolidation of fire districts. And I know that's kind of a question this morning, but for me, in your studies, and I, I just saw I get an answer to coverage areas, you feel like sufficient building, no buildings and not moving to a little bit different location?
Correct.
As far as where it was. Um, I don't think you'd be recommending this if it wasn't, but.
So when you, when you look at the station locations, you have to build them around your population base. If you're not building them around your population base, what you're doing is you're delaying response times for your volunteers to get to the station to, to respond. So we, we have a good response out of Turon. We have a good response out of Nickerson. And regardless what happens with the fire districts consolidation or not, those are going to be vital pieces to, to the puzzle here.
You on a way back in, Randy, for just, you got something, Commissioner?
Dollar amount, uh, not to be determined, depend upon the other. We know we can, we know.
Um, yeah, for the dollar amount that we're needing, I think Adam was going to get more formal quotes, I believe. What's in front of you is kind of just estimates. But we don't want to go, if you're not wanting the stations to be purchased and then financed, we weren't going to keep going down that step.
So you're just looking for a motion to move forward?
Move forward.
To discover.
For the fire districts to move forward and to finance with the shooting range. Otherwise the fire districts would have to individually finance based on the districts. And we could go to local banks and see what banks would give, but those would be independent. They wouldn't have the same credit rating, rating as the county.
Right.
Through the public building commission would have if we bonded it. So then the same question then goes back to the sheriff's shooting range. If you want to move forward and to what amount and then.
And with delays, we're going to, cost is going to go up, but also we've got a lot of the things coming in the future. I don't think, you know, a lot of people know it could happen to us.
So.
We've got to be prepared for.
I think all of us need that direction, that, that vote of yes, we're moving forward with whichever projects up to this amount. And then I'll come back with the financing options. And if you don't want to bond it and you want to use reserves, you can do that on the shooting range, not the fire districts. Fire districts, since that's, since the reserves is county money, not fire district money, can't use that. So they would, they would be by themselves financing it. That's why we were looking at putting them together with the public building commission, getting a good rate and taking care.
With the interest, it'd probably be higher in the expense.
As an individ-
As individuals, yeah. Not grouping it in, yeah.
Yeah. To do a bond, you need, you need more than just half a million, uh, to be practical because it just costs too much to do a bond if you don't get it up in the, in the seven figures areas. It's just practical, that's what it should be. So with that in mind, I would move that the commission instruct the administration to proceed with the idea that, uh, that, uh, the financing through the District Three, Seven and, uh, Sheriff's, uh, Phase Two, uh, proceed with the idea that the Building Commission would be the entity to handle the bonding price. And it would come back later for the actual figures.
Would this motion also include the EMS building or the transfer of funds? Do we need that?
That'll be separate. I'm going to recommend that out of reserve funds because that is county, that's county money.
Do we hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Commissioner Bogner, Bogner seconds that. Further comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, I want to clarify what the motion was. This is direction for you?
To move forward with the financing options to
Bring back to?
To bring back to the commission with the bond documents. So with that, I would assume that means the sheriff can talk with Hutten Construction to get whatever final documents, final estimates, if, if there's any updates. And then Adam will get with, will work with the fire districts to get final numbers and we'll bring them back to the commission for a formal vote. But it would be insinuating, I guess, that we are moving forward with these projects.
The, the only thing I don't like is tying all these things together. And I think they all have their own particular merits. And, um, I'm, I still haven't heard, like, Adam, did you say, no matter what consolidation decisions are made, these buildings are needed?
Yes, sir. So even in consolidation, these, these two buildings are going to be vital pieces to that.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Well, uh, we've talked quite a bit about this with, with regard to future needs in the county in, in our meetings. And maybe Commissioner Parks could carry this on a little further, but, uh, having the, the building, Reno County Building Commission handle this, this project, it does free things up for, for the bonding and with regards to financing other projects, correct, Randy? That was the understanding that I came away with, that, that this is a good way to, uh, for the Kansas Building Commission or Reno County Building Commission.
Yeah, the Public Building Commission, which is somewhat inactive, will be, that, put back in place. It has three members, but this allows them to, to operate and to put different entities, since the fire districts are different taxing entities into one package for the best deal. And then it allows us with reserve money for other needs that, whether it's the EMS stations or other items that come up, or in the budget process also, to have more flexibility.
For those of you who are unaffi- uh, unacquainted or haven't looked at it enough yet, uh, the Kansas, or the, the Public Building Commission is just an entity that goes through that we, last time I know that it was used, I believe I sat on that, and, uh, that was used to, uh, with the Public Works Building in South Hutchinson, to construct new pro- and to put new roof on and to construct that, the buildings and the things were necessary to have public works all in one location. That was the last time that was used. And it's, it's a, it's a good function that way.
You, Commissioner Waisel?
Yeah, so, um, I think by consolidating these, um, you know, like I said, each of these seems to have merit and seems to, to be like they need to be done. But what it does, in my opinion, is it takes the hard choice out of Fire District Three and out of Fire District Seven to go to their voters and say, hey, we're going to need to raise your taxes to cover the cost of an adequate building. And it, and, you know, basically we're going in and saying, well, hey, you're, you're going to do it, we're going to finance it. And then, um, you know, uh, we'll figure out a way to pay for it later. I mean, I, I still think the, these two districts need to go to their voters and say, hey, you know, do you want this protection or don't you? And if you do, then these are the numbers that we're going to need to do. I mean, because I think those conversations need to be had in those communities. You know, as far as, um, as far as covering the cost of the buildings, I think they ought to save for, save up for them and then build them. But, um, that's kind of, that's kind of my thought. I, I think by doing it today, we're giving, um, we're, uh, just forcing these costs on these communities without giving them any input.
Well, I might speak to that a little bit. Adam, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but what is the biggest area that these two serve? I know they do within their communities, but they serve a lot out of their communities as well, which really didn't have to do with the townspeople there if you're fighting prairie fires.
So, so Nickerson?
They just happen to be located in the populace.
Nickerson Fire Station services basically are, are northwestern portion of the county. Mine is a little piece of Rice County covers. So it's a whole northwestern piece, including, um, the Highlands and all the area around. So they, they butt completely up to Hudson Fire District. Uh, Turon actually supports the southwestern side of the county. And they have a big area that butts up to District Four and then Stafford County as well. So they're, they're both service a whole lot more than just the communities. I will tell you that in the past, when this question has been raised, we had support from, uh, Nickerson City Council and Turon City Council. Those council members have changed and we haven't been back since, but we could do that with some direction from the commission as well.
Okay, any other comments? We do have a motion on the floor. So a motion to move forward with discovery on financing or something again?
What, so I see, I, I'm looking at the executive summary. What is the amount of the bond? Because they come up with some of it for District Seven and Three, what's the sheriff's range?
Well, I think that's what they're going, they're going to come back.
Yeah, I don't have that exact number. Um, I think Adam's going to get the specific number. So if it's half a million from, for the fire dis- two fire districts and 1.2 million for the shooting range, if that number's still the right number, it would be 1.7 million.
Well, this is not a motion to pass, this is just purely to come back to us with.
I'll come back with the documents and to finance it. I'll work with the bond council and work with the sheriff's office and Adam to refine the number so that you'll know exactly what that amount is.
Yeah, if I under- if I understand correctly, basically he's looking for approval, assuming the number's not totally out of line.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any plan for consolidation talks? Like, do we have a deadline or?
For the fire districts? Adam and Travis, emergency management is working on that. As Adam kind of mentioned, they want to get some documents in front of you probably this fall to have discussions, decisions before we do the next, next time we go through the budget cycle. Because it'll take some work, some legal work to combine the districts and then to put them in the budget. So we were wanting to get some decisions done this year so that for the 2026 budget that we work on in early 2025, we'll know if that's the direction the commission wants to go. Because there will be steps legally and financially to get this done. And we didn't want to interfere with the, quite frankly, the 2025 budget that we're trying to work on right now.
I don't, I don't know if you're asking for any approval here that you couldn't already do, but like, I'm okay supporting the review and study of the bond. I, I just, I just, I guess I'm just making note, I'm going to have a hard time approving fire district, um, permanent structures without a consolidation study. It just doesn't seem right to me. I might be in the minority.
Mr. Hurs?
Well, this is a big area out there. And like I said before, there's a lot of mileage in between. If you would make Arlington a center station and consolidate Turon and Sylvia with Arlington without some firefighting equipment and people that run that equipment out in the southwest and northwest with Nickerson too. I, I'm not sure how that we could figure out a way to be timely without having some type of people involved in firefighting out in those areas. I know it just, yes, consolidation, they're working on consolidation right now. We've been through all of this process, but you can't cover 12 townships out of one office that's maybe 16 miles away. I just, it's, it's just, I, I appreciate the fact that we're going to keep costs down. And who knows, maybe they won't be needed in another 20 years. I don't have that good a crystal ball, but my guess is they will still be needed to some kind. They need fire protection out there and they need volunteers and they need some equipment that they can get to it quick and a facility. So I think we do, I, I would like to see the numbers come back to the commission before, uh, it goes to bond council. Or at least before we get it to approve bond council, I'd like to see that information back to the commission so we have a little more.
Basically what we're doing today if we make the decision to go forward, correct?
Yes, I've given you kind of a ballpark of the numbers, but you could also say, here's a maximum amount that you'd be willing to look at. Obviously, the three projects are completely independent for the cost, but we're putting it as one bond.
Do we want to do that? You want to revise that with a cost, cost of, that was a motion, that's what I thought. As to speak to response times and, and that kind of stuff, I personally have witnessed several times the response times, not only, uh, law enforcement, but also your districts out there in some disastrous situations where I don't know how they got there as timely as they did. And to remove some of them and move them further away would be a disaster in my opinion. For instance, the, uh, the two incidents we had in the fog here a while back, I did have, I still today have no idea how they assembled and got there as quick as they did, uh, the fire district out of the county. I was actually the second one at that scene out south of town out here in Bolldover, had to wait. And out of the fog in no time came the fire trucks. And I commend it that they did a tremendous job getting there and the law enforcement did too. So, um, I think to remove a spot and leave a bigger area would be, would be a bad, bad move. And you, you guys have done your extensive studies as to saying that they're good where they're at and they're going to work for the future district. And so I'm okay with that personally myself. I think that's a good thing. And so, and the facilities are, are in disrepair, they do need replaced. Well, this is exactly the right move for everybody in their opinion, but we need to move forward with something for them so that it's more adequate as well. So that's, that's my piece and I'll leave it alone. I don't know if anybody else has any further comment or we want to move forward with this and take it to a, to a vote? You good? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Cindy, I won't make you say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye. But again, just the, the funding mechanisms, I'm not opposed to any of these projects in particular, just the way we're funding them.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Well, we'll look forward to see what comes back here so we can, we can further discuss that thing.
Mr. Chigman, please for a five-minute recess.
Yeah, we can, but just a minute. Thank you, by the way, to all the emergency services for your jobs. I appreciate that and I appreciate it in the light of what happened this week. So your work, thank you, Adam, especially, appreciate that, so.
It was nice to have a notice of what was happening.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll take a quick five-minute recess, be back here at, uh, what, 10:27? what, 10:27? On the air. Okay, we're back. Again, we, from consent agenda, we moved a couple items down here to business. We'll discuss now a little bit. At six F, six G, down to, what was it? Seven E and F? Okay. About resolution 2024 planning case, a request by Central Kansas Gun Club of Reno County for conditional use permit. And then what was six G was revision electronic media device and training policy. I guess we basically tabled that or moved it or. Patrick?
Yeah.
You're up.
I'm up. So we moved it from the consent agenda. Let me just begin this discussion. I just want to quickly read something from, this is a Reno County Commission policy from 2019, just more for the public's benefit than anyone else. Reno County Commission will not hold public hearings concerning any zoning or other planning items for which the Reno County Planning Commission has previously conducted an official public hearing. Instead, the county commission's review of the planning commission's recommendation will be based upon the written summary of proceedings at the planning commission's hearings, the recommendations of the county planner, and the information submitted to the planning commission orally and in writing, which constitutes the record of its proceedings and any additional requested additions thereto allowed by the county commission. And then it goes on to say, pursuant to KSA 12 dash 757, county commission will base its decision on information contained in the summary of proceedings provided by the county planner, the record constituting the proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing and any requested additions allowed by the county commission, the recommendations of the county planner and the recommendations of the planning commission. All of which is to say, you guys, in your packet, we've had a couple planning cases that have a recommendation from planning and zoning. Staff are here to answer questions about them. The commissioners can approve the recommendation by a three to two vote. You can send it back for further consideration from the planning commission by a three to two vote. Any other action takes a super majority four person vote. And so that's generally what you're here to do this morning, I guess, if I, does that answer it?
Mark Von Achen, county planner. I stand on the merits of my report. In, in that report, you'll see my original staff report to the planning commission and then after that is a, a summary of what happened at the public hearing in front of the planning commission. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval of this request by a four to one vote, so I stand for questions.
By the commission. Questions for Mark? Commissioner Bogner?
Mark, in watching that meeting on YouTube, there was a couple things that stood out to me that I didn't understand. I'd like a little clarification. This property was zoned ag. It's not being used that way. How, how, how has it remain, remained zoned ag? When it's being used as a recreation facility? Is there another? Well, you've got residential, you've got ag. Is there another category, I guess, I'm asking, that this should have fell under a long time ago?
There is not a, another category, Commissioner Bogner. As you recall, in 2016, we dramatically reviewed our regulations and revised them. Right now, we have one agricultural zoning district that consists mainly of parcels that are 40 acres and greater. Every other parcel that is less than 40 acres in size is gonna be zoned some type of residential zoning district. And so you're gonna have situations like this where you're gonna have a non-agricultural land use occurring on a property, but it's gonna be zoned agricultural for the, the sheer reason that it is a parcel that is greater than 40 acres. Another maybe example that maybe you don't realize is, is look at all the properties that are in the habit area. All those industrial buildings, those are actually all zoned residential, believe it or not. And so we've got an industrial land use occurring on a residential property. Now, what we did as a county to kind of help people out is, at that time, we switched our regulations. What we had done is we assigned a conditional use permit to those properties that were, had a land use in existence at that time. So we don't create issues with, say, mortgages or, or lenders, you know, questioning, well, how in the world can you do an industrial land use on a residential property? That's the uniqueness we have with our zoning regulations is that we don't switch zoning to, like say in this case, a, a public recreational type of zoning. We, we leave it zoned as agricultural and we do a conditional use permit.
Okay, so what I see on the maps is we've got a gun range with a clubhouse. That's a sporting type event. So how are the? So you're telling me the golf courses in the county are, are, are ag?
Yeah, like the former Cottonwood Hills Golf Course.
We're not talking about former. That's, that, that's. We've got active golf courses. What are they?
Prairie Dunes would be zoned agricultural, yes.
And it is. You're telling me it is.
They pre-existed our, our existing zoning regulation change. Now, previously, I, I believe, like to use Prairie Dunes example, that was probably zoned public. It was a public zoning district.
So the Highlands would be similar?
At the time, we had the Highlands, under the county jurisdiction, I believe, the golf course area was probably zoned public and then the rest of the Highlands was zoned residential. Now the county does not have jurisdiction in the Highlands because it's a city.
It's a city in itself, as of a few years ago.
Any type of land use that somebody proposes in the zoning area of the county that is not agricultural or residential in nature requires the conditional use permit now.
So you're telling me these didn't require the conditional use permit because they were grandfathered?
They were grandfathered. Yeah, I believe the, the shooting range is in place even before we had zoning in that area of the, of the county. So now, if the gun range would want to do something totally different out there, if they wanted to have a, you know, you know, some type of, other type of land use, like a public meeting place, for example, or whatever, you know, then they would do a conditional use permit. Well, they're wanting to lease this land for a telecommunications tower, therefore they need to do a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Weisel, you have one?
No, go ahead. I can go next.
Okay, so in looking over the record, what seemed to me was that Nextel coming into this knew they were not in compliance, which was why they had come with variances for the height of the cell tower. Is, is that correct? Cause it, cause.
I'm not sure, Commissioner. Not in compliance?
Yeah, cause where they were wanting to build it, where they've already cleared the land to build it, is too close to the, to the property line and so, and so they had requested a, or they had already come with a variance allowing it.
It was a waiver request. Yeah, it wasn't a, a variance is a specific term, but yeah, I think I follow you, yes. Yeah, they had, they had selected a a parcel or a leased area and my determination showed it was probably 20 foot short of where it, it needed to be. They provided a survey that, that counters what I, I believe is, is correct. And they also submitted a a tower fall zone radius from a stamp by an engineer that said that that tower will not fall on the road nor will it fall on another property.
Okay. And I guess I'm thinking if we got, you know, people complaining in the, or making public comment in the meeting and then we're going outside of what we would typically do, maybe we send it back and go with what we would, you know, typically allow is, is kind of my thought and that might solve some of the problem.
Yeah, I think this is just for questions only today. That will be up to that board. Dan, are you done or did you?
Yeah.
Daniel, you have something?
Yeah, just.
Mr. Freezer?
Couple questions. Did, is a review of, of co-location a requirement? Here where we look at it at near adjacent towers and see if, see if there's an existing tower to serve these needs.
Our regulations do require each tower to be co-located or have that capability. However, state statute has really kind of taken that out of the equation, so we cannot require a, a company to look at co-location. So really that regulation is antiquated and needs to be removed from, from our zoning regulations. But to answer your question, Commissioner Freezer, the, the, the owner is gonna be able to provide co-location opportunities for other carriers should, should they want to do that on that tower.
And is there, is there any adjacent towers near this?
No.
Is this a decision subject to state law that allows adjacent property owners to object to our decision?
Yes, there is a 14 day protest period that could have been filed after the conclusion of the public hearing, but no protest petition was, was filed at the clerk's office.
Okay. So at that point, protest is not allowed?
Protest is not allowed, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bogner?
Something I'm wondering about. The property they're wanting to use is, is, I don't know how suitable that is with the fact that they needed the variance and and it's close proximity to the house there. There seems to have been some question as to the actual distance. You had in your comments in the meeting when I watched it, you, you made reference to that, that you thought it was too close. They, they made, they made reference to their survey. But he came prepared for the variance. Which kind of tells me a little bit about how, how confident he was in his, his his location. Did anybody think, let's just grab 100 foot tape and go up there and put it on the pin he installed and start measuring?
And that's what they had their surveyor go back and do. So they submitted an original site plan from their surveyor and I had questioned that because I went and pulled the deed to the property to the north and started doing my own measures and I came up with about 20 foot short from what our regulations require, which our regulations require a one to one setback ratio, meaning you gotta be setback from a property line at least the height of the tower. Communicated that to the applicant, Nextech Wireless here. He went back to his surveyors and they confirmed that the tower complies with the setback requirement. So like you said, Commissioner Bogner, this was all brought out at the, at the planning commission public hearing and the planning commission.
So what? I watched it and there was some conflict. You both had said your piece and, and I don't remember it ever being said that it had been reconciled. That he was far enough away. And that would have been at 220 feet. I have a little problem with, with, and it, what is the exact wording in our, in our rules and regulations? When I was checking into it on a property of ours, fall meant the height of the tower. It didn't mean an engineering firm's idea where it was gonna buckle and, and, and then that was gonna be the fall rate. Can, are we legally able to use something like that opinion, which is what it is, an opinion of those engineers? Can we, can you actually use that opinion to shorten that distance?
That's something that I think you have to weigh in your mind. Our regulations will allow waivers of requirements in our regulations such as parking. Parking is always a big concern with a lot of land uses here. You know, people don't want to put in the required 50 parking spaces when they only think they need 20. And so that person is permitted to request a waiver from that requirement. That requirement is reviewed by the planning commission and that recommendation has been brought before the governing body here. And so you do have the ability to review our regulations and review other evidence. And so in this case, we have a, a tower engineering company that has determined that that tower will fall within 150 foot radius, which and that means it's gonna fall on the Gun Club property should it ever collapse.
And that's being made by the company selling the tower.
I mean, just to be clear, the, the fall radius is 150 feet today?
Yes, that's what the, that letter from the engineering company said.
That, that's the fall radius. What is the radius from the tower pin to the closest boundary?
I don't have that.
Is it 220 feet or more?
It's, yeah, the, the regulations from the pin where the tower is sitting in the middle of that leased area to the nearest property can be no, no greater than 220 feet. So it's 220 feet. I, I came up with a calculation of 201 feet.
But they said it's 220.
The, the height of the tower is 220 feet, okay? The tower company, the, the, the engineering study that you're, I'm referring to is from the tower company that is gonna be designing the tower and, and so they say that that tower will collapse within 150 feet.
But the, the, the surveyor, what is the distance from the pin to the closest property line? And I know you came up with 200 versus 220. I thought I heard you say just a moment ago that that was reconciled with the surveyor who said it was actually 220.
If you refer to the survey that's in, in the packet, it'll show that, that 220 foot distance in there. So it'll stay on the, the property of the Gun Club.
So the, the difference between your 200 and 220 is, I mean, you're not using surveying tools.
No.
So.
No.
There's probably higher likelihood that your, your analysis was off versus a surveyor, right?
I used, yes, I used the survey that was submitted, that legal description plus the deed that was on the property to the north and that's how I did my calculation. But yes, I, I am not a registered land surveyor.
Okay, just, just so for, for, for the, the record, there are 17 adjacent landowners and is that correct?
There's more than 17. There's probably 17 different ones.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the staff report, Commissioner.
Approximately.
Yeah.
And I, I did know that for a rural part of the county, there's a unusually high amount of residential zoned adjacency. Would that be correct? I mean, just looking at the map.
There's a lot of residences out, out there, yes.
A rural area, it seems, okay. But again, for the record, out of all of the notices of adjacency, you had zero responses.
Correct. I had zero written responses from the public, correct.
Did you have any on the record during the meeting?
Yes, there were, there were people there that spoke to the planning commission and their testimony is in the staff report.
And about how many adjacent property owners testified to the negative?
There were three people total that I believe provided testimony. One of those citizens was outside of the 1,000 foot notification radius. However, a relation of his was inside. However, a relation of his was inside the radius. So you could say that there was three people that provided that testimony.
And were those people advised that they, if they disagreed with the commission's decision, they had to file a, a petition within fourteen days?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
If you, if you watch the, the public hearing, uh, the chairman of the planning commission reads portions of the county commissioner policy regarding what constitutes uh, new, new uh, information. And it also mentions the fact that there is a protest petition that they need to get with staff to learn more about that process and how they go about filing that.
Did anyone acquire about the protest petition?
No, sir.
Did anyone file a protest petition?
No, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else? I assume there's engineering specs on towers falling. I mean, much like the recent days, we've watched a lot of wind damage in the area. And I seen some videos of falling uh, wind generators that buckled in half. I assume the engineering and anchoring of that is such that they calculate it folding over instead of blowing away.
Yes.
With that high sail wind, so.
Can I have a clarifying question? Can, can we make minor edits to the use permit here?
You can, you can amend the recom, to change the recommendation, you'd have to get a four, a super majority of four.
But we can't.
You can with the super majority of four, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'd be ready to make a motion unless there's somebody else.
Nope, go ahead.
Um, I, I'd make a motion to approve as recommended um, with one slight change um, in the conditions to um, if it's not clear that, that um, the fall distance should be one to one. I mean, I understand um, the engineer says it will fall under that. But I also understand that they've committed by survey that it is one to one. So just clarifying um, that the tower will be put um, outside of the one to one requirement. Does that make sense?
Mark, that makes sense to you too, right?
Yeah, one, one clarification on my part. Uh, you say clarify, um, you want uh, a stamped letter from the surveyor in writing?
No, it's just, when it's constructed, it has to be done that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Got a second on that?
I'll second it.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Hirsch. Further comments?
And I don't know, I would, I would uh, want the information from a surveyor and wouldn't you?
I, you know, if they're willing to risk building a tower and it having to move because they're not within compliance, I guess that's on them. But um, it seems like we have the surveyor's confirmation on the record. I mean, does the survey state that?
The survey shows that it is, yes.
One to one. It shows it's one to one.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and I mentioned it to, to Mark earlier. I would, I would like to know for future items that may come up regarding the towers. Uh, would suggest that you contact FAA or the other property, uh, whoever's in charge of that to check on ALDS with regards to these towers. For those who have yet to know, there's an aircraft light detection ser, system. It's a radar type and that gets rid of the red lights unless there's an airplane within a certain distance. So I would like that to know if that re, applies to uh, these type of towers.
I'll check with the, the applicant here and see if he has a contact or if he, if he knows of him.
I don't care about the applicant, I just want to know if, if, if it can, if it has, if it can be approved or not.
He would know, he would have the contacts with FAA.
Okay. Well, if you do it directly, then you've got an answer directly, okay?
I, I, I guess I would conclude, you know, um, you know, as a quasi judicial board, you know, we have a requirement in this case to look just at the record, you know? And we can't really respond to um, off the record emails, because I think we've all gotten a few of those. And so, you know, it seems like what I received was in the record as far as comments. But, you know, for me, the deciding factor is there is a process of which to object. Um, and that wasn't done. And so I have a hard time um, justifying, you know, going against the recommendation if the parties that had been advised of their objection process did not do so. So that's why I'm gonna vote for this.
Any further comments or questions?
I, I think I concur with you, Daniel. Um, and then this, uh, I mean, you know, obviously it'll be on the record whether or not that really happened, but you know, I believe if you tell us that happened, then that they were told of their right to do that, then I believe that that happened.
Well, I have full confidence in what you do, so I know that you went through the right, right.
Thank you.
If we take this matter up as a vote, we gotta have four to make the res, the change?
With, with the slight change that Commissioner Friesen added to his motion, yes, it would take four.
Take super majority, okay. Any further comments or questions? Cindy, I'm gonna impose on you, I want to hear, I'm sorry, I hate to do that, I know your voice is strained, but that way we can hear audible on this.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Yes.
Popekner?
I'm gonna say no because they're placing it in a primarily area that's primarily residential.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you, appreciate it, Mark. Appreciate it, Dawn, for you being here too. Uh, move on to six G. I want to open that for discussion. That was moved off consent for the electronic media mobile device security and training and policy.
So I, I did send um, the county administrator an email asking, um, there were two places where basically the only person that we could go to was the director of IT. Um, and I was wondering if maybe it wasn't an idea in case there was, or good idea in case of a conflict of interest to have a second person that we could go to. Did you look into that at all or think about that at all?
I, I looked at it. Yes, I've received the email and that was for two point three B. So this, it's right, so this area is where he, as Commissioner Weitzel had asked about whether that could um, be some county commissioners or someone else in addition to um, director of information technology. Looked at it and really, I mean, to be honest, that's kind of, and these are all internal policies. And the director of IT is the one that has the ability to go in and override and look into information to monitor that. I don't know who else it could be unless you guys wanted to have a committee of staff of whether it's county administrator, human resources, county counselor, IT director to approve it. You could probably make some kind of change like that, but I, I want to bring in county commission because you guys want to know the, what's going on with it.
Yeah, I think my idea was maybe like human resources, but I mean, it didn't matter too. I just thought there ought to be a, a second person in case, you know, there was a conflict of interest or, you know, there was something, something going on and maybe it looked, should be reviewed by a second person. That was my, that was my thought.
And I mean, we could make that change.
Just to clarify, these, these would be the data communications of, on your official county computer and so people should be using their county technology properly, I guess. I don't know, I don't think there's, there shouldn't really be a privacy issue because it's for work.
Right, right.
So um, I uh, always appreciate how detailed Commissioner Weitzel is and he, he kind of poked me this morning to look at this a little more and I, I noted um, the same issue actually. Um, and this has nothing to do with ID department. I, I think IT department does a great job. Mike's led that department for a, a long while and I trust his judgment. I don't know that, that should be put on him. Um, I, and, and I, I saw a few things in here enough to where, you know, if I get the chance, I'd probably motion to table it two weeks and, and provide some more input. But um, I, I think it should be i, if, if we are um, because in there it says like generally, we're not going to be snooping, but we can. And if we do, um, I think that should, should be approved by the administrator and by legal just for if anything CYA purposes. Um, I think, you know, while the IT director has the, I, I think it's a bad um, policy in general, just because the person has all the keys doesn't mean they're authorized to use them. And I, I think uh, putting uh, IT staff in a, in a administrative decision-making um, process is just um, not great policy because I think they may not actually understand all of the ramifications, whether it be legal or, you know, there are like matters, um, they could see information that could, you know, HR related, et cetera, that probably need a review. Like, hey, what's gonna happen if we crack this thing open and take a look and see what's, you know, if, you know, there's a sexual harassment suit or whatever, like this stuff can get hairy quick. So I think oversight is important. I also think um, the five commissioners, um, it's not um, well-defined here how one of us could get snooped on. And I think it really requires, because there's no um, administrative head to us. I think that would need to be defined and require the commission to approve um, any sort of review of our information or data transmissions. Um, and that's not clear. So I think we need, because that could, like, right now, the way I would read it, interpret it is, you know, the chair. And um, again, nothing against current chair, but if there was a different chair and politically they wanted to, you know, get some information, like, we need the protection that, like, the board has to make a decision on this together if, if we're gonna do that. And then um, I think there was one other point um, related to the bring your own device policy, which said that you can be required to give your device over. I think administratively, um, like, I'm not giving my device over unless there's a legal obligation to do so. And I'm not gonna sign a policy that says um, I'm just gonna give my device if administration says. Um, so, and that's the way I'm reading it. And I think employees should be afforded privacy protection even if they're using their device for, for um, county business. Like, I don't think they should be required absent a, a legal order to hand that over. And I don't know if it's gonna go to the county. And there's a lot like, I know the line is blurred a little bit, but like, people have very private stuff on their phones and to hand that over to the county, I think, um, could get the county into other issues. And so just, I think there's enough in here that I, I'll go ahead and do it and we can talk about it. Make a motion to table um, maybe for the first week in June and allow the commission to provide further input uh, on the policy. Overall, I think the policy's fine. I just think um, there's some areas here that could re, uh, need a little refinement after reviewing it.
So I planned a second, but once I second, there's no discussion. So if anybody else had to say?
I do have a discussion. I would concur with some of the information you're saying, Daniel, definitely. Because one, we use dual to open up the county computer, or I've got to use it. You know, and we get personal emails from the county that I agree with. You would sometimes not want to be devolved depending upon political affiliations and be used in the wrong way. I don't think we're doing anything wrong on the computers, but I think that does need a, a secondary backup review. I agree with you guys completely in that. So anyway, you're gonna make a motion?
I already did.
I mean, we can discuss the motion.
You did make a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, that was the motion?
Motion to table for the first week in June.
I'll second that motion.
Any further, you want to just uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you?
Save your voice. No, I don't think so.
Question for staff, could, could we get that in word form just so?
Yes.
We could make some red lines.
I'll send it to you, all of you in word form and just reply back directly to me with any questions or comments and any additional ones. I think the other one that Commissioner Weitzel had was four point one, which was about.
Yeah, one, one thing that helps, uh, just if you guys can turn that on to like red line mode and then when we, when we mess with it, it, it tracks the edits. That's always helpful. Thank you.
Monthly reports. Yeah, I got you. You're, you're up when you're done.
Monthly reports are attached in the packet for health department, HR, IT, maintenance, public works, solid waste, the treasurer, and you services. Any questions on anything in there? Okay, the other report that's in the packet is the financial report. This is for twenty twenty-four through as of April thirtieth. There's nothing really out of the ordinary here. TNC and the general fund, the interest, we are still doing good. Again, when we budgeted, we weren't expecting interest rate and we're doing so well. So that's why it's already above the budgeted amount in the general fund. All the departments are spending in the thirties percent. When they're not, when they're less than thirty percent, it's usually because of vacancies to retain personnel. But um, I will know as you, if you look at, I'm sorry for going so quick. I was going down the special, I find special equipment. Yeah, they, I wanted to point out that special, we're spending more than receiving. That's a lot of, in the contractual services, the amount spent is already above the budget. So we will have to watch that. A lot of that is software and vehicle purchases that are done beginning of the year. So there's not a lot toward the end, so just in case you notice that it's not month by month an even amount, especially in this fund. And CIP's a little bit the opposite, they're bigger projects, bigger things that take time. So we're receiving the money, but haven't spent as much in this fund at this point. But those will be spent this year, a good amount of it. Projects just take a little bit longer, contracts and vehicle purchases. Any other questions on any of these specific funds you wanted to look at? Other things I had, um, just give you an update or just a reminder to the public that next week is, instead of a normal commission meeting, since it's the fifth Wednesday, we'll be. instead of a normal commission meeting, since it's the fifth Wednesday, we'll be in a session and we'll be, have tables set out here for commission and partner agencies and direct departments to come talk about their budgets. And that, and it is open to the public and there will be some presentations, so we'll figure out how you guys can see these screens. You'll probably be sitting out here so you can view that, um, for the presentations. But each department, either department or agency, only has 15 or 30 minutes. It's gonna be, we're gonna be going through these very quickly to get through all of the ones we have scheduled. Um, between, what is it, 9:00 AM and about 4:00 PM is when we're gonna be doing it. So keep going the whole time. I'll be a small break during lunch and we'll have food provided for the patients to eat in case you're still doing work during the meeting.
I was just, maybe everybody else likes 9:00 AM. I, I was, and I don't like early meetings, but I was wondering if it made sense to start at 8:00 and try to get done earlier. Does that mess up every, all the schedule? Probably does.
Yeah, we've notified everyone the nine o'clock is when I start and I give the introduction. I can check with some of them. That may take longer. Not the outside agencies that are pretty much set, but if we wanted to bring in some of the other ones, we probably could try to start earlier.
Doesn't, I just, I don't care that much. I just would like to get out of here.
Anything you can do earlier to get ahead of it?
Well, so the ones that I, I'll be speaking are at the very beginning and then kind of right around the lunchtime. I could move some of that up and see if some of the depart- I could see if Barbara with A Jean, she's the very last. I could see if she would be available in the morning to do it the first.
Yeah, I'm just to be clear, um, cause we, we, in the last few years, we had a more streamlined process than we did when I first started here. And like, there, there, I think there are certain budgets that, um, have no, you know, objection. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. But are we gonna hear from every single department about?
No. No. Um, departments that have very little change and it's only personnel that administration put in there for salary increases, they will not be here unless they're a large department. And then there are some directors, for example, Kyle with Automotive, since he kind of oversees the vehicle purchases for multiple departments, he will be here to talk about that for special equipment, not the automotive department. The same with Adam will be here, not to talk about emergency management, but the fire district budgets, just a quick overview. So we are not bringing every director in. Um, I think the Drug Corps is one of the outside agencies we are not bringing in.
Okay. And then, um, if, have you, did you get a sense for kind of where commissioners are leaning? So you, you've kind of prepared departments for cuts? I mean-
No, I haven't really heard back from anyone. I mean, not specifics anyways. And you guys may not have had enough information to really get back to me. Um, I've looked at the department budgets. What you'll receive this week is mostly their request. I've looked at a lot of them. There are a few areas I, I would cut. I sent it to you last week in my report, the cuts I'd make to capital. There may still be more cuts I'd make to capital. If you paid attention, if you noticed my comments, there are areas we could cut there. The outside agencies, the partner agencies, I didn't touch those, cause usually that's the commission and I haven't been pulled by any commissioners to kind of go a, a specific direction with department budgets. I would say 90-plus percent, 99% of them, their budgets are very realistic. They, if there's any changes, it's a thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars here. There's nothing that's over the top in their budget request.
Well, there, there are two that stood out to me.
On capital or agencies?
Agencies.
Well, normally we, you know, we look at these things that, uh, I mean, I would, correct me if I'm wrong or anything, but there's probably three directions here. Ones, cause I, I don't think anybody's gonna wanna see a bigger budget. I'm just assuming. So one is status quo, like, don't, you can just try to hold the line. Another, which we've done for three years now, is reduce the mill levy by 5%. And then even tighter haircut is to, um, maintain, uh, what's it?
Revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral, right? That's the, that's the hardest, cause it, it cuts the deepest, right?
Right, because what the revenue neutral rate, and I'll just round numbers. So Reno County may have levied $25 million in property taxes for the current year. The, to stay at the R revenue neutral rate, we would only be able to collect $25 million in property taxes next year. Regardless of valuation increases and budget cost of operations going up, we'd have to make cuts to where that 25 million is the only number we could stay with. You're right, Commissioner Friesen. The other options are the status quo. So if, if our mill levy is 37 mills, valuation increases, we stay at 37 mills, we get more than $25 million, but we're not raising the rate of, of property taxes. It's still increased and we know that, cause that's how it works with valuation increases. The, the second option or the middle ground is to go a lower mill levy, but not all the way to, to what would equal 25 million, because we have increase in costs. So it'd be in between. And last year we did the R, the revenue neutral rate, I think the year before, we were close to the revenue neutral rate, but still had a decrease in mill levy, may not have got the R and R. But the taxes have gone down for the past few years for Reno County.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I think it would be helpful if we stated where we're at today, so Randy and staff hear it. So they come prepared and we don't blindside them. Like, I don't, I don't know where we're all at, but-
Well, I was gonna say that. He needs some direction before you come to the meeting next week to hear from each one of us.
Did, did you ask her for direction? Cause I, I, okay, cause if you didn't, I missed it.
Direction, Commissioner, and part of the reason is we're doing it a little different this year because there's not a lot of time. The requests and the budget work session to get it on everyone's calendar, we're doing it before we have the valuation numbers. So we don't have the state budget form filled out to where with new valuation numbers, we don't know what the mill levy would be, what that R and R mill levy rate would be. It's still 25, the same tax dollars, but we don't know what the mill levy rate would be. So we don't really know how much we would have to cut.
Well, we do if we're staying at the revenue neutral, it's just if we do any increases.
Right, but what you're gonna look at is their expenditures mainly and are there areas that, to the commission's, your perspective, that you know you wanna cut? Unfortunately, there's not a lot of areas to cut. It's capped in a budget that is probably the options flat, reduce mill levy, but above R and R and, and what it would take to do R and R.
Well, I just think it, it's a good exercise, like, and it's tough, right? If, like, I would, like, where I'm at, I like to see mill levy cut another 5%. And you're, and I know you're gonna be like, that's, that's gonna be really tough. And, and you'll explain why it's tough, right?
Right.
I think that's, like, if we don't start there, in my opinion, then, you know, I don't know if it's even possible. And what you think is tough, we may not agree is tough, but, um, don't, it, it doesn't mean you have to agree with us, right? You can stand there and say, I don't think we should do this again. And that's okay. And I wanna hear what your opinion is, but I'd like to see 5% again, personally.
Yeah, I can show you guys what, I mean, it won't be next week, but when that budget recommendation is in front of you with the numbers, I can show you what it would take to get there.
And I don't like you just taking it all from cash either, cause that is, that does not solve the problem. You gotta change the ongoing expenses. Which is even harder, I know.
That, that's hard, cause it's capital or-
That's my opinion.
Big departments.
So I'm done. I'm, that's my opinion. I think everybody should say what their opinion is.
We've put ourselves remaining revenue neutral for at least two years in a row. And we know what inflation's done. At some point, that's probably not gonna be feasible. And, uh, you know, I just wish people would actually read their tax statements. Because we are the entity they write the check to, whether we get the money or not, we're the villain. We've put ourselves, the thing I hear most is, well, we're on a fixed income and the taxes went up. Yes, they did. Not because of Reno County, but it's because of who we're collecting for and you're writing the check here. So we're the villain in the deal and, and, uh, probably shouldn't be, but at some point, with inflation, we, we can't keep going. And, uh, with the revenue neutral, we have actually, uh, put ourselves in this county, the county as a whole, on a fixed income. And, uh, there's only so long you can do that before the thing blows up in your face. And I'm not for spending money, but we catch hell for doing it, whether we are part of the problem or not.
I think I'm gonna recommend bringing in an alarm clock for our meeting, because you all decided we needed to do this in 15, one day instead of two days. So I think questions end at 15 minutes. That's what I think. And if, you know, that's, that's the, that's the hard part with trying to rush through things is, is a critical piece of this whole deal. I'm, I'm, hopefully we knew this, but, and answer everybody's question, but, uh, critical portion of our work is budget. And you can read it, but a good portion is hearing someone say why. And I think that's, could be missing a little bit and, and hopefully it won't involve the mistakes. But I've asked people, I said, where do you want me to come? I get this blank stare. Okay, so our decision-making is ma- is, is making those decisions.
He's let Randy make the sausage.
You're next.
All right, so, um, I, I would like to stay at revenue neutral and if we do that, we're gonna have to decide what we wanna cut. Can you, I know, I know there are lists of this somewhere, but I don't know where the, where the comprehensive list is. Can you provide us a comprehensive list of, like, the services that each, or have them provide a comprehensive list of all the services that each, that each one, uh, each department provides? And, you know, if we're gonna have to cut each services, you know, I think that would be easier, you know, well, Department of X does this. Is this something that's really a benefit to the citizens of the county to, you know, as, as, as far as like awaiting, you know, or would it be better for them if we didn't increase their taxes and cut the service?
I can, yeah, I will get you a, a list of the services, just as a kind of, I guess, notification that not all the services are one person or a cost. So we, it's hard to, if you only pick one or two services out of that, that, you know, scenario, then it may not really have much impact. Just because of our budgeting doesn't, isn't really program budgeting to where all those costs, you know, 5,000 here, 10,000 here, it's, one person may do, work on five different, you know, programs. So cutting one program just frees up someone's time, but doesn't really get rid of a person, if that makes sense. Just as a, but that, that discussion may be hap- Yeah, I mean, if there's any cuts there, so I'm sure there will be discussions.
Me? I'm a little reserved because I don't know what, I, I'd really like to hear when you get the figures together from the valuations and things, what you think. I wanna hear from you about that, but, um, I think you probably know my feelings is that we need to try to hold it as neutral as we can. If we, if we can do that, I would, I would like to stay where we're at. I may not be realistic. I agree with you, Don, with inflation. But then somebody has to. Uh, maybe after November, things change, maybe they don't. But if, in my opinion, if they, if they don't, in the way and direction we're going, it, it is gonna get worse. As a country and, you know, states and otherwise, but, uh, I've shared that with Randy. I, I feel like I'd like to stay neutral again if we could, but if it's not realistic, but. And also to concur with what you said, I've been preaching that for the last little while, that we're not the highest taxing agency in the county. And I get tired of being shited for that too. And I, every turn, I turn around telling somebody, I had this conversation just before the meeting. It was over some other school issues, I'll leave it at that, uh, from somebody that I had to meet with just real quickly. And, and, uh, and I made it clear to them to let them understand that we're not your highest, uh, property taxing agency at, in the county as well, but, you know, it's, it is unfair that we catch all the flak for that. I've always said this, and I wish at the state level they'd change this. I don't care whether this is right, wrong, politically correct or not. They oughta have to be under the underside of us to be able to, to be able to raise taxes if they're going to. They shouldn't be able to do it at will, any schools or any colleges. They should have to refer to us first so we can see their budget and see whether we think they should do that. Uh, it's interesting to me that we've asked for budgets and, and is that something that's going to be presented to us on outside agencies? If they come, and I know we've got a limited amount of time, but are they gonna tell us what their expenses versus their intake is? We asked for that last year after the fact that we cut a bunch of them, that protested some of our cuts. And, and, and fairly maybe they did and maybe they didn't, because one of them that, that hollered the loudest, I was there for a goodly number of years and they had a, a pretty decent reserve. And I know, I'll, I'll leave it at that. That person has, has stepped down, but, um-
All the outside, all the partner agencies in the packet that was sent to you last week, their budget, their financial information is in there.
Yeah, I guess I just didn't catch all that. I, I just, I've had a, it's finally settling down where I'm at. It's tough to spend a whole lot of time, but, uh, but yeah, I, I'm just gonna leave it at that. We'll see what happens, what you bring back to us, but that's my feelings. I'd like to stay where we are if it's at all possible. Um, and not burden the folks. I guess maybe to say, hey, it wasn't us, but, well, may not be realistic. That's where I'm at with it.
All right. And that's all I had for my report.
Okay, Daniel, you got anything?
Yeah, um, just wanted to, um, thank, um, the good communication during, uh, the storms. And I'm sure the chair was more involved in, in the disaster declaration, but appreciate staff and the chair getting that out. Um, it seems like, uh, everybody kinda, I think, uh, while Haven's not in my district, sounds like it got hit, uh, perhaps the worst, uh, and it's, uh, Adam and, and appreciate Adam and his staff. I'm sure he had some, a, a late night or two, uh, but he said the, the community really came together and, uh, cleaned up and, and it sounds like power's back on, but, um, thank you to all the emergency personnel and emergency staff that, uh, worked a lot of overtime. And it seems like we have one of these every five years or so and, uh, but, uh, looks like we handled it as well as we could as a county. So appreciate all the leadership there. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks. Commissioner Rogan?
Piggyback on Daniel a little bit. We had a fire station without a roof. Well, the roof was in the, in Main Street, but I did read where, where we had an active and functioning fire department there, even though we didn't have a buil- real good building. And just general, uh, I got something you don't normally get yesterday, folk hall with a thank you. Citizen had a good, good, uh, outcome with the new regulations on, on, uh, this, this sanitation deal we just reworked. Said it worked very well for him, appreciated we'd done it. So hopefully our time was, was, was well-spent there. And, and the time of a lot of citizens that helped sit on those boards and, and, and took care of that for us.
I would, Ron Vincent's in the au- audience and he, like, so I was chair for two years and Ron was persistent about this. And it's like, okay, Ron, I got a lot of stuff we gotta get through. But he wouldn't let it go and he's been working on it for probably a decade. So I appreciate his persistence. Thank you, Ron. Like, you're, you're one of the main reasons why that got through eventually. reasons why they got through eventually with your expertise and just not letting go, he was very, very persistent.
Which is a great point, proves that the public has an input on what we do.
Yeah.
It's something very reasonable, so.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine, anything else? Mr. Hurst?
I attended the KNSIS Corridor Development Association last Thursday, and we took in a new board member that's from gas company, electric company, progressing good, you have some things going on slowly, the economic development usually is. Met with a group of concerned citizens regarding the Bush Racing Track event, that's dirt work is being done northwest of Pretty Prairie, several concerned citizens about this, and provided some research on it that I don't think is, if it works like it has in other past, it may not last long, but while it lasts, it's not good for the community in Reno County. The sheriff is quite aware of it, administration is quite aware of it, and we'll just see how it goes, because the first race is gonna be June 15th scheduled, and so there's a lot of information out there on Bush, in its horse racing. Attended the community extension meeting with KSU and local extension people and interested parties here the other day. Have we got a date for the, I mean, a, a place for the mayor's meeting yet?
We've looked around and what was available, we're gonna be at Gambino's.
Gambino?
5:30 to 7:30.
Okay, which mayor's meeting? Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at 5:30 at Gambino's? Hope everyone can make it.
What's the date of?
It's Tuesday, and unfortunately Bueller Mayor will not be there, that's when they have their city council meeting, so.
What's the calendar date?
28th, 28th I think.
Yeah, Tuesday the 28th.
I would like to public remember, and all of us remember, that coming up this Monday is Memorial Day, and I had someone talk to me about this the other day, that I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider beside the US flag, to the POW MIA flag also underneath of that. Stafford, McPherson County, both, I understand, both fly, both flags, so I just wondered if that might be something that the commission and administration might look at to include the POW MIA flag beneath the US flag, and just thank all the veterans for everything they've done.
I would agree with the flag, I have several constituents that want that as well, that would like to see that, I appreciate, they appreciated the veterans when we came in there, they've been to some of the things that we've done, certainly the, the artwork and recognition for veterans, so I do thank them for their service and their sacrifice, the ones with us and not with us. Mike, I don't really have a comment, my question may be something for you to bring back to us, Randy, is remotely working from here for the county, is that, is that, do we have people that do that, that are not in facilities and, and working from home, and if so, why, and?
We have limited, I mean, cause a lot of people have, have to deal with the public one-on-one, so there are some jobs that can have remote work, and we're working on a policy, you know, internally, a policy that would, for remote work, but it's not a lot.
Is, is, I guess my question is that out of their house, that they're working remotely for us, and?
It'd be, if, if it's out of their house, they go to a coffee shop, yeah, they would have a county.
Well, I can understand having a meeting somewhere if you're working, but I mean, if they're primarily working out of their house or other location than this, and I'm curious about that.
There are some, I mean, it's very limited, but we do have some, and we can talk more about that if you have specific questions about that.
Let's do that later on. Okay, I don't have anything else. Mr. White's on. Oh, did I skip you? I did, didn't I, sorry?
I just figured you were saving the best for last.
I just jumped right under you. Just thought I'd heard enough from you today, I was just gonna, no, not really.
So I was reviewing the commission stuff on Sunday night and lost power, the same as many, many people in Hutchinson did, and what I saw, at least in, in my community, and then in the people talking online, was just a willingness for neighbor to help neighbor. And there were people on there saying, hey, if anybody needs this, or, you know, I mean, I know I've, I keep a stockpile of candles and flashlights, and so there were some people that had light in my neighborhood because of that, because, you know, always like to be prepared in an emergency, and, you know, you'd be surprised the number of people that don't have a flashlight, and it gets really dark, especially with no power. So I was really, really pleased to see the number of people that came together just to help their neighbor, and even with helping cut limbs and things like that. You know, the good Lord blessed me, lightning struck a tree right in front of my house, landed in between three vehicles, within about a foot of all three of them, and there was no damage to any of them, so I don't think I'll ever play the lottery again, because I don't think I can get any here luckier than that. But, so that, that was, it was really good to see the community did, come together like that, and, you know, sometimes when disaster strikes, it can either bring out the best or the worst, and we're fortunate that, it just seemed to really bring out the best in a lot of people. And then, I'd already finished talking about budget stuff, but I figured this would be a good place to say, we did last year talk to, or, you know, give notice to the partner, partner agencies to expect cuts this year, so whether or not we do that or not, but, so I mean, that's definitely on the table, but we're gonna have to, if we wanna keep your taxes down, we're gonna have to make cuts, and so maybe talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors, and look at the services that are provided and, and decide, you know, hey, you know, we would be okay with having this cut, and talk to your commissioners, because, you know, if not, if we keep everything the same, then taxes are gonna have to go up, so if we want to, if we want to, to, cause, I mean, people are struggling right now, you know, there are people, again, putting groceries on their credit cards, struggling to make their rent, and then the rent goes up, or, you know, and if property taxes go up, your rent's gonna go up proportionally, so, so yeah, I mean, the people in the community need to really think, hey, what can we do without, what services don't we need, because if not, then taxes are gonna have to go up, so.
You can thank my wife for the power going out, she asked me, do you got any flashlights ready or anything, five minutes after that it went out, I said, you could've just been quiet maybe, so, anyway, well, with that, if we ain't got anything else, I think we'll call in a German and get out of here.